Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 7th, 2023 special town meeting of the Town Council and School Committee. I would like to call our meeting to order. We are full in attendance. We have Anna Jones, Connor O'Shea, Matthew Voucher, Michael Kane, Kathy Hill, Marilyn Richards, and myself. At this time, I would ask Greg to open up the school committee and...
Thank you, Ralph. I'll call the school committee meeting to order. It is 6:01, and the school committee is in full attendance as well, so I'll pass back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
So with that, I have to make an announcement. This is being recorded by LCAT. Is there anyone in the audience recording? There is no one in the audience, so the answer would be no. So at this time, I would ask that we please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we do introductions? I know you did some, but...
Yeah, I was thinking that would be the...
Get some new folks.
That would be great if you would.
You want me to start? So I'm Greg Thompson, Chair of the School Committee.
Antonella Rochella, School Committee.
Elizabeth Marcy, Voucher, School Committee.
Me, too, of the School Committee.
And Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Amy Jones, Town Council.
Connor O'Shea, Town Council.
Matt Voucher, Town Council.
Tom Christensen, Deputy Town Manager.
Kim Collins, Finance Director.
Or Director of Municipal Finance, is your official...
Okay.
Ally Town Manager.
Jeanne Quagletti, Town Clerk and Clerk of the Council.
Mike Kane, Town Council.
Kathy Hill, Town Council.
Marilyn Richards, Vice President of the Town Council.
Ralph Page, President of the Town Council.
I'm Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Sarah?
Sarah Trulio, School Committee.
Sarah's recovering from foot surgery, so she's...
Feel better.
Thank you.
Fancy scooter right here.
Very fancy.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is public comments. I don't see anyone in the public to make a comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom? No, there is no public comments. Is there any council comments other than welcome? Thank you for coming. Per requirements of the Charter, I believe it's Section 6-1, we are required at the beginning of the budget process to meet with the school committee. I'm going to ask Mary McNally to give an update on the financial condition of the town, which this is a kickoff to the whole budget cycle this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. The town is in very good financial condition, at least in my humble opinion. We have a substantial amount of free cash. Our stabilization account is in good stead. Kim's here, and she's going to elaborate a little bit on some of the particulars, if you want dollar figures. You know, the town values, property values, went up approximately 12% over the last fiscal year. Concomitant with that, our tax rate went down $1.09 per thousand, which we're very happy about. Did have over, almost three-quarters of a million dollars in new growth based on those building permits and the like that are issued constantly by our very busy building department. Our bond rating is double A. We're in good stead with all of our financial advisors, and our budget to date, year-to-date, is about 4% ahead of schedule with respect to revenues. And in terms of our expenses, we're a little bit out of balance on expenses, but it won't come as any surprise to anybody, but those are mainly from utility expenses that have just skyrocketed over the last several months of winter in particular. As far as capital projects, we have not yet convened our capital advisory committee for fiscal '24. Various departments have submitted their requests, and Tom is the Chair this year of the Managers Advisory Committee, so he's going to meet with various people that are on that subcommittee and vet the projects and prioritize the projects that are submitted by the respective departments. We have bonded several items out of our enterprise funds for water and sewer. As you know, we used all of our ARPA money last year. The town got 4.7 million altogether over two years. The first year, there were limitations on the spending that was allowable under that legislation, and it was limited to four major categories, one of which was water and sewer infrastructure. So we did three major projects in town, replacing water mains. The balance of approximately 2.4 million came in in the early part of last fiscal year, and we used all of that to fund approximately 26 capital projects, some of which had been outstanding for a few years, and all of which were very necessary in our opinion. So, having said that, just as an introduction, I would like Kim to participate and have you let her have the opportunity to share the spotlight here by... Because she went to the trouble of preparing some of this at my urgent request today, and in light of the fact that she's only been with the town for about two and a half days, I'm very pleased with what she was able to put together. And also, Don Fonte helped out with the year-to-date revenues and so forth. So, Kim, if you want to just elaborate on a couple of the things I said, feel free. Floor is yours.
I feel like you pretty much told them everything.
Well, I have a tendency. I'm sorry, I talk too much.
You know, I mean, there's not much more that I can add to what she said, other than, you know, your certified free cash was 6.8 million. You have 4.1 available. Your OPEB trust is close to 10 million, and your stabilization fund is close to 3.5 million. CPA fund balance is 1.5 million, and that's broken down into... And clearly, I'm new here, so I'm just starting to see how you spend your funds, but you've got open space of 67,000, historic resource for 246,000, affordable housing 173,000, then there's about a million in undesignated funds. Other than that, there's not much more that I can add at this time.
I will add that we have directed the department heads to submit a level services budget for fiscal '24 across the board, but for, obviously, that incorporates the concept of the COLA increases that were negotiated through the various unions, at least on the town side, and I'm sure on the school side, there are several that have called for those increases. So the budget will go up this year despite the fact that it's going to be level services because of those... Well, as I said a few minutes ago, the utility costs are going to spike it. We did hire 13 new positions last year, and all of those... Well, some of those were for half of the fiscal year. Others were postponed indefinitely because there was no place for them to sit in the town hall, which is an ongoing burr under the saddles of all of us over there. So there are going to be some spikes in the budget, some well-anticipated, others not so much. So I think we're going to get a little bit of a hiccup when the final budget is presented, but I've done my best to try to inform the council that as it comes due, the payday's here. It's not a cliff, but the payday's...
Well, so is that a directive, Mary, that we will all be level services? Is that too much consensus with the council as well?
Do, and as I said, some of these costs are unavoidable because they're contractual requirements that we now have.
But no new FTEs is the strategy this year?
I haven't received a request for anybody on the town side to hire any new staff this year, next year. I mean, we have some vacancies already. Our finance department, to Kim's unfortunate inheritance, is down two people. They're already budgeted, and we're going to continue to budget for them in fiscal '24 because I really don't think we can do without them. But in other departments, we've had some, as you know, sometimes there'll be a vacancy that's not filled for a month to six weeks, which allows us to save a little money. But, I mean, like in Tom's case, Tom came into my department in September, but he had one foot in DPW because, for at least a month or six weeks after that, because there was great difficulty finding anybody closely enough to his skill set.
Can elaborate.
Yeah. Really a hill to climb. He had a hard time finding somebody to fill his position. So that savings exists, and Bruce Fenny, to his credit, is doing what he does every year, and he's scrambling around trying to apply funds, and he'll be asking the council for permission to move things from salary lines to utilities, for example. But, so everywhere, there's been a patchwork, like these two positions I'm talking about in finance. I mean, they were, they're not highly-paid positions, but altogether, it may give us $60,000 or $70,000 over a portion of the fiscal year, so... But no new positions have been asked for.
So I anticipated probably about a 4% level services, and I know that's high relative to years past, but that's an interesting thing. So are we not going to go through the finance oversight process if there's not going to be any additional requests, or what's the...
It'll still go to finance oversight and see... But again, I think it's more like the last couple of years has been more just a review for them. It's gotten better and better. Obviously, a meeting like this really helps, but it's always good to have another set of eyes looking at everything. Again, ultimately, it's our decision what happens and...
Are you going to give them that directive, though? No new FTEs to financial oversight and to maintain a certain percentage?
Well, they can't increase the budget that I submit.
Okay.
And they can make recommendations.
Yeah.
They don't have any authority to do that because they tried to do that last year, and...
Right. So, but that's what I'm saying, Mary. If you submit a level services budget, then what's the point of financial oversight? I just don't, I don't get... Would they cut additional things?
So that's the possibility.
Oh, yeah.
So it...
And why, what would make them do that, though?
But it's just like the council. We have the authority to cut a budget, but we don't have the authority to increase a budget.
So are you going to give financial oversight a percentage to work on so that they cut to that percentage, or they're just going to have carte blanche to cut?
I don't think we can give them a percentage only because, well, such as the utilities. I mean, we're talking, what, a 30%, 35%, 40% increase in utilities? I mean, there's certain things that you're just not going to be able to...
So level service is going to be at 4% if we go... So that's what I'm saying, is the council giving directive to finance oversight that if you hit 4%, then start cutting? Or is it up to them to say, I don't know, we want to be 2%, we'll cut deep?
They're going to be looking at level services. So in other words, I personally don't know what contractual obligations the school committee had. I know in ours, they were pretty consistent. Like I said, it's one of those to take an overall approach of it and take a look at it, and obviously, if they see something that really jumps out, they're going to ask questions on it, and they'll ask Mary questions and...
So, okay.
So as far as the school budget goes, I mean, obviously, we know utilities in the town has gone up. Is there anything, I mean, I've seen in the paper about a district and all, some of the towns, I think it was Wilbraham, that they've gone crazy. Do you anticipate anything that's way out of whack, or...
Well, if I commit, one more comment, Gordon, sorry.
Make as many comments as you would like.
Of course, we have a new governor in the Commonwealth, and so the budget that I'm talking about, level services, whether it's 4% or 3% or 5% or something, we're not going to know, we're only going to know the operational side, and even that is going to be a guesstimate a little bit in terms of the ultimate tax rate and the impact on taxpayers, because last year, Governor Baker's budget was somewhat delayed, and everyone's anticipating now that with the new administration, it'll be even further delayed in terms of its submission. Typically, the governor's first crack at it comes out in January, and that's come and gone. So we're only going to be able to estimate our operational expenses, but we do firmly believe that the new growth will be substantial again, and I think that, from what I've read so far, I think Governor Healy has made it known that she intends to continue to support a lot of initiatives, certainly in the education field, that are very important to all of us. So, but we won't, we just don't know those numbers in terms of the final budget until sometime...
For the sources.
Right.
Yeah. Now, are you planning on putting the million dollars or whatever back for capital in the operating budget as we have in the past, but not last year?
Well, we, there's two schools of thought on that. My left brain argues with my right brain every morning about this, but...
It'd be fun to watch.
Riot.
Outstanding. I bet.
Part of me says, well, we spent so much in the last couple of years, and we have not completed those projects, that maybe we should take a year off. But that's counterbalanced by any project that you defer, or at least don't put on your long-term strategic plan, is probably a mistake. But then I go back to the other side and say, well, then how much are we going to approve out of this capital advisory committee? And just spoke this morning with Ralph on some benchmarks for that, and I think you had said something like 1.2 million, maybe, which doesn't allow for a lot of projects. And I'm trying to balance the interest of time with the capital committee, too. I don't want Tom to convene a meeting of half a dozen people and have them meet a dozen times to vet 100 projects when we know from the jump that we're only going to be able to fund six of them, for example. I'm exaggerating on the numbers, but, so that's a concern of mine because everybody is extremely busy, and I know the school department put together your capital plan, which is substantial.
$7 million.
Yes, I'm aware of that number.
Well, and so that's why I asked how much we're going to fund.
I don't see us...
But in the operating budget, it's been typically a million, usually about five.
Yeah, a million.
We'll have for the town.
And then we'll bond out for...
And bond the rest, but I'm just, it's not going to go back in the operating budget because I know we took it out last year.
It will go back in the regular budget.
Okay.
Last year was an anomaly in that it was all the ARPA.
Federal money, yeah.
I'm just hopeful that people remember that, and everyone tells me I'm kind of naive to think they will, but that was a special effort to emphasize the use of federal funds in this community. I mean, there was almost $5 million. Neighboring communities got, I mean, Springfield got 127 million. They don't know where to spend it. They've got so much money. Chickaby, Holyoke, the major cities, obviously, got a lot of money. 4.7 million's a lot of money for a small community like this, but it sure went fast.
Yeah.
And, but it helped us a great deal last year, and I'm up to, we can at least get back on the... I don't want to defer any capital projects that are needed because I think that's long-term a mistake. So kind of a hybrid answer, Greg, but that's what I've got for now.
So we've had budget discussions, and we've identified possible positions that could justify a need for. Are we saying that they should not be brought forward, or should they be brought forward over and above level services?
So I think in the past, and I'm going back quite a few years now, we had done a basic, like I said, a level services budget, what you have, and then list additional, and so that when the numbers come in, and we can take a look and get more rock solid.
Yeah, but if levels at four, and we're saying no new FTEs, I just want to know kind of how we're headed. If we send FTEs to finance oversight, are they not even going to look at it? Or, Mary, will you even pass it forward? Because you said the other departments don't have...
Yeah, but I think I'm obliged to pass yours forward.
Ours forward, to them at least. You can do whatever you want to finance oversight, I think, because that's their board or their...
And in my experience, frankly, the oversight hasn't ever seemed to be primarily focused on cuts. They're more focused on the explanation for the increase than when it's offered by the respective department head. I think, by and large, in my experience anyway, they've accepted that explanation as, okay, well, I didn't know that.
Well, but they haven't always approved every requested FTE. I know they haven't.
My experience, they have not ever crossed my budget. The school might be a different...
But that's what I'm, if they don't have a directive in terms of stay at 4% or stay at 3%, and they don't have a directive to add FTEs or don't add FTEs, then what is their motivation? What, I don't...
I think that's something the Chair of the council would have to answer because they don't work for me.
I know.
They're not a part of me.
And they're simply an oversight board, so, in other words, they dig into the budget, they dig into the explanations, and then they relay them. It's easier for a group of people, instead of our council, to meet on a weekly basis to try and do that. I mean, I went through it, and like I said, I want people to understand numbers inside and out to take a look at it. As far as the FTEs, like I was saying, I mean, my thought would be a supplemental budget saying, these are positions that we would like to have if there's funding and we can do it, that would be great. And I think that's the best way to go because, especially at this time, we don't know what the funding...
Right, but can you identify that percentage early on, and because we know it's going to be the cliff, we're going to be at four, I'm telling you, the town's going to be at four. Come in, Ralph, be ready. Just because of what happened last year, because we took capital out, and if we put the million back in for capital, then with those 13 positions, we'll be at 4% level services. And so if that's the case, and if we're truly not going to add FTEs, I just want to know ahead of time.
If we give the marching orders to them and say, keep it at 4%,
Yeah.
and you find out that you're at 4.5%, I don't think that's fair.
No.
I think level services...
But how do they understand the needs of the town and the financial stability of the town if you, as a council who are a legislative body and should know better than anybody, don't give them directive to either be at a percentage or a number of new FTEs or a dollar amount? It's just their personal beliefs on what FTEs should be funded or not, which is problematic for us because we don't get a seat at the table in that group, and so...
So level services, which we're basically asking, doesn't include additional.
And I get that, so if you tell level services, then we're done, right? Like, level services is what it is, that we know the dollar amount, we know the percentage increase, we could tell you that pretty close right now. So that's what I'm just saying. So I don't understand why we don't get the directive.
That's what I'm saying, though, but if there's additional money in the budget, and you have a need for additional FTEs, wouldn't you like the opportunity?
Yeah, but you should be, can you identify that before the process starts?
I don't think we can because we don't know what the total financial budget's going to be.
Greg, we did give that second page, which was a supplemental budget, which does, you know, be very transparent. What are our level services after we move up all the bargaining units and contractual obligations? And then we show that picture, but then there was that second page which showed our needs, and we will get the chance to talk about that, just like we did it last night.
Absolutely.
And I know, and I know that's how we do it historically, but my big concern is with this, and I don't want to keep using the word, that 4%, right, in front of the high school vote is problematic. So, yeah, we're going to come forward with a couple of proposals for additional FTEs, but if you all said to us that we're not going to add FTEs this year because we want to pass a high school next year, I'd be all on board with that because I agree with that philosophy. So I'm just asking that we look at this year's process and say, all right, if it's 4% and if it's level services, maybe we don't go to 5% this year because we have this high school vote coming up. That's all I'm saying. So, and my worry is that the finance oversight committee, they don't have that, they don't answer to anybody, they answer to you.
So my...
And if you don't give them directive, then whatever they give you, then you all have discussion on it, but if not being in those meetings all those times to understand the depth of the conversation, and how do you all make the decision based on what they recommend? That's all.
So I understand your thought process, and I appreciate it. My thought going forwards is the new high school is completely different than the general operating budget, and the new high school is a vote of the citizens for a dead exclusion to build a new high school. We still have to operate the town. You still need money, you still need increases, we have to deal with this separately. Do we all know that that vote's coming up in November? Absolutely. Do we want to do whatever we can to try and make sure that that goes through? I personally do. I mean, I think that's the best thing, but I also want our town to operate and be able to run sufficiently as we have it now.
Right, but because we added 12 or 13 positions last year, and we're going to be at a 4% level services, wouldn't you agree that 4% is a large increase any year? It's one of the larger ones we've ever done. I know it is because we've seen it, right? 3%, 2.5% is pretty typical, 4% is large. So if we're at 4% at level already, I'm just making a plea that the, I don't want to put a taste in the taxpayer's mouth that this budget will be bigger by 4%, which is larger already, even if we go level services, and please vote for the high school. I know it's separate, and I understand that, but you know how voters are. When they get their tax bill, they complain. We all do it, right? So this will be, this year was already a larger increase because we got reassessed, and I know the rate went down, but everybody's taxes went up, and that's all really, anybody really cares about is the dollar amount. So that taste is already in their mouth. I would like us to, I'm just putting it out there, it's completely up to you all, to have a fiscal tightness this year because we're already going to hit a higher increase because of how we budgeted last year in hopes of getting this high school vote passed.
So...
The fiscal tightness, I'm sorry, Kathy, I'll be only be one second. The subliminal message about, we didn't, I didn't say no new hires because we want the high school to pass, but it was certainly in one's mind, subconscious in your regular consciousness all the time. We didn't apply for, or petition, no department asked me for new positions because we got 13 last year, and we got 13 last year because the prior two or three years, we got zilch because nobody asked for them, because we're always trying to maintain a very fiscally prudent and tight budget. The 13 was somewhat of a change, but don't forget, I think five or six of them are in the fire department, which are funded by the ambulance revolving fund. So it's not as severe a hit as you might think. And so we're very much aware of the looming high school vote, and I don't know of anybody that works in the town that doesn't want with their whole heart and soul for that vote to pass. But as Ralph said, we do have to continue to run the town, we have to be efficient, we have to be prudent, we have to honor our own labor contracts, and some of the, as you well know, better than I perhaps, the third-party costs are what kill us. However, we got some good news today. The Scantic Valley Health Trust increases are only 2% this year, and they, we thought they were going to be 7%, so that's a significant savings.
But you've seen the proposals from the departments. How are they coming in?
I haven't seen them yet.
Oh, you haven't?
Well, Kim and I went over them today, but, I mean...
They must be in the threes and fours, right, for level services?
No, most, well, we didn't even get to that level of analysis. I mean, now, this is not an excuse, but she's been here for a heartbeat.
That's why I'm asking you, I'm... Next meeting, I'm going to her.
I wait for finance to answer those things. And unfortunately, Olga, who is everyone's right hand, is absent for a few days due to some family issues. So Kim didn't even have her to lean on for this week anyhow. So our budget process is approximately two to three weeks behind, but I have every confidence in my department heads that whatever questions we have as we look through it, and we did look through it today and saw two departments that kind of raised an eyebrow, that were highlighted by Kim, and I talked to both department heads, and there's a very viable explanation. It's software and maintenance costs. IT's budget went up 50,000 or 60,000 or $80,000 or something from last year. But these are things, they're not, you know, as you know, usually, labor is your biggest cost, but in some instances, it's these third-party things that we, you know, we're desperately, we think every year about, should we get a consultant to figure out how we can save money on our liability insurance, on our health insurance, get out of Scantic Valley if there's an option that's better? But we don't have the money, we don't have the capacity to do it in-house, and we don't have the money to hire it out. So it's always a pull, and I just want to reassure you, if I haven't done a good enough job of that yet, we're very, very, very concerned about the school getting its vote passed by the town passing it, I should say. And so even though it's not an articulated message to department heads, don't do this because we want the school to pass, it's in here. And that was more than a second, Kathy, so I'm sorry. I'm timing it.
Kathy, go ahead.
Greg, I hear you say you don't want to put a bad taste in the taxpayer's mouth and then have them turn around and go to the ballot box angry or upset. So if you feel that way, then why would you submit FTEs to begin with?
Because we all want to answer it.
Well, I just, with one FTE specific, I think they're both important, but one of them, I think, is a necessity. It is due to the aftermath of COVID and the closings and what's happening. It's an SEL... It's an SEL teacher for Metta Brook. We have students that just cannot function in the regular classroom, as you know. And there is more than ever before, and they need a safe place, teacher they can go to. So when your parent, your teachers in that classroom, they see that child's getting to the point where they can get so frustrated, they can empty out the other students from the classroom. It's best that they're able to have a place for these students to go. And unfortunately, that's where we are right now, and I don't think it's going to change anytime soon because we're seeing that uptick even, and we had to, you know, readdress the preschool and how we have such a great need for more preschool spots right now because referrals that are coming through, we had to go to half-day programs from the full-day program. So that is something that I would almost say is not a luxury. Potentially, at least part of it maybe, I mean, if teachers retire, we hire younger people, it might cost less, that might help with it, but we would still need the FTE. And I just think that, because it's what I do, like for my day job, it's, and when you have a place and you don't have a place for these students to go, because we try to keep them in the least restrictive environment, but sometimes you got to catch them before they're having an issue, get them out of the space, or entire classrooms have to evacuate, and it goes to a library to do it. So for me, I feel like that's important, and that would be something where I would ask that, you know, if you want to sit down and talk with, you know, Gordon about it and why, and that where.
I don't check, I've never challenged your rationale.
But that's why I talk about FTEs, like that one, I would be like, you know, maybe we could address.
That one.
Hold on.
May I just add one element to that? The FTE that Beth's talking about actually was an FTE we had in place and cut two years ago. So we're still recapturing positions that we had reduced, not last year, but the prior two.
So, I mean, so you're restoring.
Right.
Kathy, though, if you said as a council to the Finance Oversight Committee, no new FTEs, or Mary, if you did the same, because I know the budget goes to them from you, or stick to a 3.5%, then we would follow that because that's your initiative, that's what you're going to pass, right? But in the great unknown, that is the Finance Oversight Committee, unless you throw it out there and convince them somehow, then it doesn't get added. So if somehow they think 5% is good, then these are worthwhile positions. If nobody's getting new FTEs, I'm great with that. This year, because of the school, because my number one focus is the school this year. I know they want to hear that, but you know what I'm saying?
I do.
So if everybody's going to.
Rationale, like Beth just described, would not be lost on anybody. I don't care what town you're living in right now, it's in the national news, you know, mental health issues from three years old up to 100 years old, all, you know, a fallout from COVID. So it's not like you're asking for some creatively labeled position that people are going to say, come on. We know, I mean, who can, who can argue against the dilemma that every school district in America has to wrangle with right now?
And what it does is it gives you, as you know, Kathy, it gives you the potential to possibly keep these students.
Of course.
In district as opposed to out of district, which.
It's more expensive.
As Ralph had referred to at the beginning, next year, all districts will be experiencing, Massachusetts anyway, a 14% increase in out-of-district tuitions. So that's something that in our level services budget, we're wrestling with. And the other element that we're wrestling with is we know that we have to appropriately staff our preschool, and we're running at referrals, which is another result, unfortunately, of the pandemic. So last year in December, we had 21 referrals for new preschool students who possibly could be in need of special education services. This year in December, we had 45. So we know that we, just as Beth had mentioned, last night, we voted to go from, for next year, not this year, to go from our three full-day preschool classrooms so that we have spaces, to one full-day, three half-day classrooms to increase spaces for incoming students.
I personally would leave them in and let the Finance Committee look at that. Mary just brought something forward that they learned today. We're budgeting, you know, an increase in health for 7%, and it's going to come in at 2%. So there are those wiggle room things. And I know our assessor, Diane Bishop, is going to have new numbers for us as the months evolve here around new growth. So we can't, neither side here can look into that crystal ball now and say, they're hard numbers, so.
And I guess, I guess my issue is though, and I stated this before, is the Finance Oversight Committee, I know you sit on it, and I know you do hard work on it, and I know you understand the budget because of that, right? And so you have some input on the whole process as it is. But without directive from the council to that committee, we can convince you there's importance to it, but in the end, if it's a lot more money than we feel comfortable paying or putting in the budget as a whole, I just think there's a disconnect in how that happens.
So.
You know?
From just talking to you, it's quite evident that you're concerned about the school, and I'm pretty confident you're only going to put in what you absolutely need this year because you're worried about the school. And because of that, if an FTE is needed based on that, and it, there's no other way, you're going to put it in.
Right.
We're okay with it.
It doesn't mean it should be funded this year, that's what I'm saying. And I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about level services at 4%, and I'm concerned about the additional FTEs that we keep adding every year and our OPEB liability that keeps going up. And a town can only grow so fast, right? And so maybe we're growing too fast right now, I don't know. Or maybe we could just take this year and slow it down because we're trying to build this biggest thing that we've ever built in East Long Meadow ever. That's all.
And I think that's going to be a lot on the school committee and your talks during your budget process. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to take away from, if you have a need.
Yeah, okay.
You have a need.
Thank you.
I think we need it this year.
Yeah.
And Marilyn, you had?
I just had a quick question. You know, we all met previously to prepare for this meeting.
Well, not all of us, a few of us.
Right, right. At that time, Gordon, you mentioned, I believe it was the paraprofessional.
Yes.
Where is that in your negotiation?
We started negotiations with them, we're not too far along, we just.
Not too far along. So that's, so they're not part of the level services yet?
We have a proposal.
A projection.
All right, well, that's important.
Based within, yeah.
Because based on what you said at that meeting, you know, there clearly are some specific issues that are, I believe, are critical.
Absolutely.
To our kids, and so, thank you.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, right.
The other component I just want to add, because I'm not sure if everyone realizes it, that there's a mandate, once the student preschoolers turn 2.9 years old, we have to take them, we have to, we have to make room for them, and we, so when we hear about these numbers that are 45 at the midpoint of the year, and last year they were 41, and we still know that there's another 27 that have to, the numbers are huge, and that the need, the need is here, so.
And my response to that is, I mean, these are unfunded mandates, obviously, and we're not the only ones that are experiencing that. I'm sure throughout the whole Commonwealth, we've had schools with issues.
Absolutely, yes.
And I can't believe that, you know, the legislature is not taking notice.
Well, even on that 14% of special ed out-of-district tuitions, we're hoping that the legislature might come in with some kind of funding to help school districts. I mean, I always plan, as your business manager for the school department, I always plan a 2% to 3% increase annually on those contractual services. 14%? What does that equate to? Over $400,000, that in itself for the school department?
Pam, I meant to ask the other day, who said 14%? Like, who said, oh, this is.
OSD sets the rates, and I don't know if Mr. Smith, can I?
You're right.
More on it. OSD sets the rates, and they work with the districts, and at every school, these private schools, there's specialized needs that the students need. So depending on what that is, they could be at all different places throughout the state, and OSD works on whatever those services are, and it comes up with a fee. And I think because of inflation and because of loss of employees, I think there's a lot of factors there, but they came up with this 14% is what it's going to go up. So like I said, that's over $400,000.
Regardless of the program.
It's just, well, it's just that I, so I have my projection from where we are right now with special ed out-of-district tuitions, and where we're going to be next year, that's working with Michael Forde, the services director. And so we project out, and so, I mean, I anticipate $3.2 million in out-of-district tuitions. These are big numbers, and, so I just thought it was important of that.
Respectfully, Beth, because I really do appreciate the heartfelt explanation of those needs with those particular positions. Honestly, every single department of, on the town side or over here, every school, every department, they take their responsibilities very, very seriously, and the consequences of not spending money can be dire. I told a couple of people today, we settled, the town settled a couple of cases in the last two years where we didn't have, because we don't have an ADA compliant building, we paid out over $100,000 to someone who worked on the wrong floor and complained, and we didn't have an HR department, so that person didn't get good advice about what her rights were, and it just snowballs. It's not as, it's not as significant as the child's needs, certainly, I don't even mean to compare them, but every department has those issues. I mean, if we don't fix a water main when it breaks, over the weekend, I had about 15 texts from Bruce Fenny on Saturday. The school, the Burchland, they're up and running, but not, no. The high school had a problem, there was a water main break, that's all over time. You can't just say, well, we're not going to do it. I mean, say we're not going to do it, but nobody would be happy. And my conclusion is, I have confidence in the townspeople of East Long Meadow because I think they know that the cost of living is higher now than it has been in a while. And if our budget goes up 4% and we go this way, which we won't, we'll come back this way, I think that there might be some grumbling, but, I mean, Diane Bishop told me the other day, she only had like nine calls on assessment grumblings from the most recent tax bill that went out. Nobody's happy when they get an extra 200 or 300 bucks, but I think some people just complain at the moment. The knee-jerk reaction is, oh, for heaven's sakes, and then you live with it. And if you want a community that values education and values streets and values police, I mean, we've got new requirements in the police department with posts, and that's why we appointed a lieutenant to have a second-in-command there, got fire standards, our ambulance revenue is through the roof, we have to maintain that, we have to get new trucks every so often and so forth. So the consequence of not acting or tightening the belt, which we try to do anyway, is perhaps more costly than spending the money when we think we need to. And education is just, I mean, it's a political football now, it's, there are people who are going to support the school, I think, and they're just going to do it. It's not going to be the difference of a million dollars or $10 million. If they want a new school and they know how important it is, they'll vote for it. And then there's probably another little basket of people that won't, no matter what. Hopefully, the people in the middle can be the ones to put us over the finish line. Not doing it or not taking care of the other needs in the town, I feel like I would be doing a disservice in my role if I didn't advocate for the things that I know are important to. I mean, we went from having no HR department, now we have five people there, and we need every single one of them, and they service the school too. I mean, I know you have people dedicated to that here, but between our IT and HR and the finance office, DPW with buildings maintenance, I mean, there's an awful lot of interplay that makes our budgets kind of married to one another. And we can't, we have to prioritize or appreciate the significance of everyone's needs and then just try to balance which ones we can meet in which fiscal year.
Greg, I know you have some.
No, I, and I agree 100% Mary with you, I just think it should be the people in this room that make that decision, and that's all I'm going to say about that. The process alone, and those of us who answer to the voters, and those who don't, and those who understand the picture and those who don't, and the priorities that you all have as a board, and that we all have as a board, right? We reflect that. So it's just the, and it's not up to me, so I'm just putting it out there. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the high school, if I could.
So before we get into the high school, Marilyn had a.
I know that financial oversight has been a real rub over time. As a counselor, I appreciate the second tier of scrutiny that the financial oversight goes through. I'm not a financial whiz kid. I try, I sit at those meetings, it's a learning opportunity for me to digest this huge budget that we're dealing with. Ralph goes through the budget, line by line on them, you heard that. Connor watches on LCAT because he works. You know, we have different things going on, but we do, we do take part in the process, but however, it suits whatever needs we have. And it's an advisory, you know, committee. They don't tell us what to do. I've been in some of those meetings where, you know, I've said a word or two, but generally, I'm there to listen to the process, to understand the rationale that they talk about when they have concerns about something or something else. You know, they're not to be feared, they're talented people. We all bring gifts and talents to the table. So, you know, we have this discussion every year, and I just want you to understand that it's the council that makes the decision at the end.
That's good.
Usually by that point, I'm ready, because I've gone to the meetings, I know what you're talking about. Okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Gordon, you have anything you'd like to add in?
No, I mean, I think we've.
It looks like multiple pages.
I was just being prepared.
Okay.
But I think we've discussed the, sort of the challenges that we're looking at, you know, we're still dealing with the impact of the pandemic. The biggest areas that we're looking at currently are making sure our preschool is staffed appropriately, and what is that going to look like as we continue to get referrals that we've not, the level of referrals we've not seen before. And then just making sure that we're working on how we withstand that 14% increase. And, you know, I do think that both Governor Healy is going to continue to support, so I'm cautiously optimistic to what her budget looks like as it comes out in March. And I will be on the phone to Senator Olivera and see what maybe he's thinking in terms of, you know, are there funds that the legislature might be able to put towards some of these costs?
I hear he's at our table. Is he?
All right.
Yeah. So put a bug in his ear then.
He also is part of the selection team that selected me as principal level high school, so we go with that.
There you go. You got history.
Good connection.
And I do believe.
He was the senior in high school at the time, but.
Gordon.
I'm sorry?
A good judge of character.
Thank you, you're very nice.
And I do believe he's reached out to us to look to be at one of our meetings coming up very shortly, so I think it'll be good to put a bug in his ear and say.
Sure, just find out what they're, how they're seeing this.
You can cut Springfield to 100 million and add to the surrounding community.
Then Ryan Ash will be at the next one, or Puplo.
Yeah. You're trying to get them all into one meeting.
Connor.
Since you mentioned that, would it be worth inviting the school committee to that meeting if the rapper's going to be there in case they have any questions or comments for them?
I think if it's, okay, I instruct Jeannie that when we find out when it's going to be, we will, we will send it over to you in that way there. I don't want to gang up on them, but if it's 12 questions, that's okay.
We can send some ahead of time if you like.
Limited to six, Gordon.
So at this time, I would ask, any counselors have any inputs, suggestions, thoughts in the past that we'd like to jump in? Mary, any additional?
Sure. I was only going to say that Springfield, since I mentioned it earlier, got 127 million for their ARPA money. And what they've chosen to do with it is rolled over a substantial amount from free cash to give taxpayers, residential taxpayers in Springfield a break. And there's, not without debate over it, but they've used some of their ARPA money to do that, they've used free cash to do that. Many other communities did that during COVID. They took a million bucks out of free cash to, we never did that, and we hope we don't have to do it because we want to reserve our free cash, although Kim said sometimes in Ludlow, they've used free cash for.
Well, no, they've used free cash for capital one-time purchases.
For capital one-time, well, we've done that too in an emergency.
Not with Cal. Not with, not with free cash.
There's other opportunities, that's why we want to keep our reserves and the appropriate parameters, and now they're up around 12 million altogether, and that's where we'd like to keep them, that's in a good place as far as the Commonwealth's industry standards, so to speak, are concerned. But there, and there's ARPA money at the Commonwealth that's not yet been distributed, so it, there's not, there's a lot of opportunity, I think, that just needs to be uncovered or determined by the legislature where and how they're going to disperse this money. The ongoing problem is, we're 13% of the legislature out here, so we're going to get the, we're going to get the baby thimble full of any relief.
But one-time expenses for things like that, for that sort of funding, right? Yeah.
What didn't help, I mean.
Yeah, oh yeah, so $7 million in capital requests just alone in the schools, so we hear you.
So all is not totally bleak. I mean, we try to remain hopeful and optimistic that we'll meet all our goals, keep the people happy, and move the town forward as best we can in our collective judgment, please?
Live happily.
And live happily ever after, yeah.
And we're to help you, we're here to help do that too, so. But we're in schematic design on the school project that's moving forward. Just for some basic things about it, it'll be back there, all new, behind the existing building. We're talking about no fossil fuels, air exchange only, so it's all electric, so units on the roof, so no gas, no oil. Just in our last meeting, we talked about photovoltaic, which seemed to spark a lot of interest, which was encouraging, I thought. So we may put solar panels on this thing for $2 million investment, it may have a pretty quick payback on that. Costs are high, we're at 750 a square foot right now. You know, a few years back, they were looking at 20, 30% less than that. So that's a big part of the concern, is the, just the dollar amount on it. So we're all trying to keep that number down. Currently, we have the three departments, LCAT, IT, and central office. Do you have an update for us on, because we need to make a decision on that by March?
I think April.
April.
April, May.
Whether to keep them in, and I think there's value in keeping a lot of them in, certainly LCAT has value in being this building, many of the things they record are here anyway. And right now, Don has a good relationship with the students, and I know it'll change in terms of staffing and how we'd go about it, but it may make sense to have most of LCAT here anyway. IT was talking about having a help desk here anyway, so it may make sense to have them here anyway, depending on what's going on. So that's why I'm looking for some kind of input. I know you were going to talk about the other building today, but maybe that's not going to happen. Do you have an update on that?
We don't have an update yet, and we're still waiting for additional information, which I was hoping would be in by today.
Okay. Will we know by March so that we can, as a building committee, make a?
I don't feel confident of having an answer with certainty with respect to the move of central office by any date certain. I'd be reluctant to offer anything at this point with certainty. We're working on a lot of things, and it may come together in March, it may come together in April, it may not come together at all. So that's not much guidance for.
So keep them in the project then, is what the consensus is, we're just keep moving forward. So IT, LCAT, central office, stay in the project.
For now.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Anything else, school committee? Sarah, anything from afar?
It's getting there. No, I just think that, you know, this is, I think, the fifth budget season that I've been a part of, and I think this is both the largest group that's convened for the original conversation and the initial meeting, and also one of the longest and I think most collaborative conversations I've listened in on and been a part of. So I think, again, the more often we meet, and the more often we exchange ideas that focus on the betterment of the town as a whole, then we all start to recognize what the priorities are and find ways to ensure that they are fulfilled. I think what Beth mentioned about the needs at the preschool level are sincere, and I think, Mary, you've been a staunch advocate of the high school. I've seen the quotes in the reminder, and I think tonight, again, you made it very clear that, yes, the high school's a priority, but the entirety of the town is also a priority, and balancing the needs so that everything within East Long Meadow moves forward, but in a way that is respectful of the taxpayers. And I think that the more we meet and the more often we have these conversations, the more solidified we become as two governing bodies really moving forward with the best interests of the town in mind. So I'm thrilled that this conversation was both in size in terms of the length of the conversation, but also in terms of the members, the representation at the table. So I think it will lead to good things for the town.
Thank you, Sarah.
That was great.
I think we're all set as a committee.
You want to adjourn? Oh, Connor.
Kayla for one suggestion.
Absolutely.
Since I think this was also good for all of us to get together, perhaps rather than it just being a, once at the kickoff, could we perhaps do this as we get a few more final numbers as the budget process continues, instead of just it being a sticker shock at the end of the deal?
I would be more than willing, like I said, as it comes closer, to extend the invitation. Sometimes it is difficult to get all these people together at once, but.
I mean, they wouldn't come on Valentine.
Thank you for that accommodation, by the way. But we're happy to come anytime, certainly, you know, anything that you find important, we'll be there. And thank you for coming here and letting us host. This was nice to host tonight, so thank you all for showing up here, so. I'd understand a motion to adjourn the school committee. Motion made by Antonella, and second by Beth. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. We are adjourned, thank you. Four to zero, yeah.
Motion made in second, then. Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.